We only, we have eight members present right now. We need one more for a quorum. I see Jason Morosco's name on here. Oh, Jesse's saying we do have quorum. Okay. We have nine? Oh, Tim. Tim's a voting member, correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot. Yeah, Tim, okay. I already talked to him. Okay, so yes. We just received the agenda this morning via email. So if you're, if you haven't received that yet, please let us know. And I will pull that up right now. As soon as I can find it, and then we will call the meeting to order. Okay. So, so good morning, everyone. We will call the Athens County Regional Planning Commission for June 11th, 2022. Order by our count, we have a quorum of at least nine members present right now. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from May 14th, 2020. Steve Pearson sent those out previously. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes?
I'll second Chris.
We have a motion from Lenny to approve the minutes as submitted by Secretary Pearson, and we have a second from Commissioner Schmeele. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from May of 2020?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is approved. And next item on our agenda would be, I believe, got a lot of windows open, everybody. Please bear with me.
Yeah.
Would be the swearing in of any guests wishing to speak or present. I don't believe we have any guests on our agenda this morning. Is that correct, Jesse? Okay, great. And then, so the next item on our, on our agenda will be announcements and updates. Do we have any announcements and updates before we move into new business? Okay. Moving on to new business, first item is COVID-19. I don't know, I don't see anybody from the Health Department on our call this morning. I don't know if Mayor Patterson, I know you had a few updates yesterday. You talked with, at the Athens Uptown Business Association meetings. Or anything you would like to share or county commissioners?
For COVID-19, I don't have any real updates other than our numbers went up by another four yesterday, as of yesterday. Continually being updated by Jack Pepper and when I can, getting on the EOC meetings. Chris Schmeele and I were just on a very interesting call yesterday afternoon, end of the day with the director, I can't remember his full title, but director of something under the, in the Census Bureau, kind of like the chief of operations for the census, 2020 census. And gave us some interesting updates as enumerations as it pertains to Ohio University students. So we've got some homework to do to see if we can capture more of the off-campus counts, but other than that, I don't have any updates, any other updates on COVID-19.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else on that matter? Okay, if the Health Department joins us, we will switch back to that item. Next item, Athens Township Plane Zoning and Land Use Plan. I don't know if Steve Pearson, Secretary Pearson, if you have anything you'd like to share on that or any updates?
Yeah, I do have an update. The, and this just happened yesterday evening. I had mentioned at the public hearing that the zoning commission had that there were a couple applicable court cases. One of them in particular was a fourth district decision about warrantless entry that was a case brought against the city of Portsmouth. So just so you know, and I don't know how many of you really studied the proposed zoning, the proposal, but it included a housing inspection program, which was never part of the original discussion with the trustees. When petitions were presented to us, it was just for a zoning code, not a rental housing code. Then included inspections and the collection of fees. So after the last meeting, the Regional Planning Commission, the trustees scheduled our public hearing that's required, that'll be held on June the first, and it will be at the open air area of the Plains Community Park. As far as I know, what, what we have to do as trustees is present what was certified to us from the Regional Planning Commission and the zoning commission, which would include what has now been determined by the prosecutor's office to be unconstitutional. It's an invasion of privacy, a violation of the Fourth Amendment. So in process, what the next step is, after the trustees hold their public hearing, they can make a recommendation back to the zoning commission, which is what we will do to, I don't know exactly what that vote will be, but it will be at least to take part of that out. Related to that, same thing happened when I was the co-director in Nelsonville, same kind of situation. What Nelsonville did was they made inspections on complaint only. So that's a consideration now that's being played out or presented to the prosecutor's office that we could drop the mandatory inspection, but still collect a registration fee. So that's still a question that's up in the air. Another question that I've asked too, that's still up in the air is, does a statutory township even have the authority to adopt the housing code? Now, state statute specifically says what we have jurisdiction over, we're not like a home rule township where essentially you have legislative authority, just like a city council or a village council. We don't, we don't have that as a statutory township. So there's still some outstanding questions, but the matter of this heading to the ballot is still on track, we're timeline wise. More than likely, what you're going to see is the trustees are going to recommend some changes back to the zoning commission. When those go back, there's a 10-day window for the public notice that trustees will put out that we're going to hold a rehearing or a second hearing. In that time, in that 10-day window, the zoning commission will either listen to our recommendation or suggestion, or they won't. At the end of that period, the trustees can, on their own volition, modify the proposal, but it takes a majority vote, takes all three trustees to amend the text or the map. So that's kind of where we're at with that right now. We're still on track, but the question kind of that's still hanging is can it contain a rental housing, rental inspection program, which more than likely, if it, if it is found that somehow or other we can do that, and people could voluntarily be inspected, we would more than likely then ask the city if the code enforcement office might want to take those duties on. I realize, now, now here's the thing though. This, the city, in my estimation, is going to be cut back on the number of inspections they might be doing. If the population in town, the student population, you know, if there are empty houses, I realize they'll still have to be inspected and there'll still be a fee due, but the inspector isn't going to have much time at all doing the inspection. So you might have inspectors who, you know, whose caseload may not have dropped in numbers, but in time, they may have dropped. If not, we'll have to hire an outside agency to do the inspections. We may even have to do that, even if the zoning portion on its own passes. I don't know if it was a joke or not, but Ted and Ryan asked me what it would take if I would resign as a trustee and become the first zoning inspector of the Plains. There probably wasn't enough money, but we'll, we'll see how it goes. So 500 rental units approximately, just in the Athens Township portion of the Plains. So you're looking at about maybe a third of the caseload that an inspector in Athens might have. And these first inspections, I can tell you from experience, they'll be tough inspections because nobody's ever gone through each property before, and the, what the things that are written up will be a tremendous list of things that a, that a landlord might have to repair. But that may not even occur now. So we have that, you know, that Fourth Amendment warrantless entry decision from the fourth district to overcome. So that's where we're at on plain zoning. Sorry to go on for so long there, but I think it was an opportunity now for me to express what I had to other people previously, when initially the first inclination the trustees had, that a housing code was going to be included in the zoning code, was right at the end of the deliberations by the zoning commission. This is nowhere near the zoning light that we talked about in those ad hoc committee meetings. There was never, Paul, if you recall, any discussion about a housing code. That was not, that wasn't part of the conversation. So, but we're still on track timewise, at least the zoning part, more than likely be able to be on the ballot.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Any question, any questions on that from, or comments from anybody else? Okay, if not, next item on our agenda is age-friendly initiative, Athens County Age Friendly Initiative. See, there's a few of us in this call right now, myself and Jesse, and a few others that have been working together with, there's a broad coalition, I would say. I know Gary's been active with that, and I think Commissioner Schmeele and Mayor Patterson as well. Broad coalition of people around the county that are working together to take on what's called an age-friendly initiative, which is a program through the AARP. And we are very early in the process right now of establishing the relationship with the American Associations for Retired People for a project to get Athens County designated as an age-friendly place, and that's a planning process that we are looking to undertake. Right now, it is being led for the first step of it, which is a lot of it has to do with data collection that is being led by Rebecca Miller from, I believe she's with the Voynett School at Ohio University. And so she's been helping coordinate a lot of meetings for us, and we are looking to, several things that we're trying to do, one of which is broaden our coalition and begin having conversations about the better, the best ways to engage throughout the entire county to make sure that we have champions in each of the communities and participation from each of the communities. We know that taking on an age-friendly project such as this, the needs from community, commute to community will be a little bit different. We also have a lot of nonprofit and social service agencies from around the county that are participating, and so they'll be looking at as a broad, a broad application of how they provide services for all of us as we go through an aging process throughout the county. And I don't know, Jesse, if you have anything you would like to add on where we are with it? But one thing we definitely want to talk about or would like to see is if any, if there's any interest in engagement from any members of the Regional Planning Commission and participation. We would like to invite Rebecca Miller from Ohio University to our July meeting, assuming that we have one, to give a presentation about it and give a summary of where we are and talk about the framework for the planning process and so that everybody on the Regional Planning Commission can better understand how the Regional Planning Commission and the membership, of course, we are a broad coalition representing all sorts of aspects of Athens County, the community, and to see how we all can play a role in this process.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much it, Paul. So yeah, I think we'll be reaching out to individual communities throughout the county to try to figure out who should be on the core groups for talking through the eight domains. So we're talking about a five-year process that begins with an assessment, as Paul stated, and then we would move into a planning phase, and then there's also an implementation phase. So, and then the eight domains of livability, which I have in front of me, are outdoor space and public spaces, transportation, housing, social participation, respect and inclusion, work and civic engagement, community and communication and information, community and health services, and sustainability is one that we're looking to do for, for the Athens County and cities initiative. So we just wanted to, yeah, get that message out to this group.
Yeah. And so at our July meeting, we will, we may try to clear out the agenda a little bit to give Rebecca an opportunity to present, perhaps giving 20 minutes on this discussion so that everybody can better understand where we are with it.
I could say something real quick.
Please.
If there's any interest in having DD or DD agency involved, we'd love to partake, if not myself, maybe a colleague mine could, could get involved with that. Sounds like a great initiative.
Absolutely, Erin. Thank you.
Calls from John D. Boom. Calls from John D. Boom.
Not sure who's called the phone that is.
I think it's mine.
Okay.
It must have been mine. It was mine.
Quite all right. All right, well, moving on, unless anybody has any other. Just a reminder, everybody, you can mute if, if you don't need to comment. That's quite all right. We will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is old business. The first item there is the US 50 corridor sewer expansion project. Lenny, do you have a, I know there's an article in the Messenger I read earlier this week. Do you want to fill us in a little bit perhaps?
Bad news. We went to bid a second time and only got two bids on part of the project. So that one small area received a bid that was 26% over the engineer's estimate, and larger area in the southern side came in at 100% over the estimate. So we're in the process of discussing alternatives, including getting a new engineer. We're negotiating with our current engineer about a termination of the contract and what kind of role they would play in the future, if any. So we're having some meetings over the next few days to try and figure that path out. We have about 18 months before our funding gets pulled, so we're still have time to get construction underway. We anticipate that we'll get something that works out based on a lot of feedback we've been getting to do. I see it as a, probably a smaller project to start based on the funding that's available, rather than all 1,500 homes. Probably go to a smaller group of that that focuses on five subdivisions, or what we're calling the South Area of the project to get started, and then we'll look for funding to get the other, other portions as we go on. We're going to evaluate the design, have another engineer evaluate the design, and we hope to have that done by the, the contract in place by next week, and then have that done in a month. So a month from now, we'll have a better idea of where we're headed and what we're looking at. But right now, it's on hold again. We got two strikes, and hopefully we won't get that third one.
That's really unfortunate, Lenny. I know we've, a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into getting this project under, underway, so. Back to the drawing board, I guess.
Yeah.
Any other comments on that from membership? Okay. Next item, we can talk about electric aggregation, and I know both Gary's on here and Luke are, Luke are on here, Luke Salfridge.
Sure. Just want to highlight a few things today, be brief. We had the Village of Little One Sopec this week. That'll make our 15th community and brings our total up to five counties. The Rita Solar Assessment Program, which is a free solar assessment for businesses, is restarting with precautions. And thirdly, the Athens Carbon Fee Collection begins this month. We'll be holding up serious public hearings prior to any approval of funds from that project being spent.
Thank you, Luke. Anyone else have any other comments on that? Okay. Next item, Athens County Land Bank.
Things are, you know, moving along. We had some good news from the Supreme Court about the expedited foreclosure. They ruled that the expedited foreclosure is constitutional, so we hope to hopefully be starting to employ that again. There's five properties that we have funding from NIP to tear down, four of them in Gloucester and one in Nelsonville. And so we're, those are going to be happening shortly. That's about it. I mean, we, we, I, we're in line to get an AmeriCorps position via Rural Action, so we're working on some of those details. And, you know, there's just a lot of projects in the, in the works, and Treasurer Wasserman is, you know, basically whittling those down as best he can.
Thanks, Chris. Okay. Moving on, next item is our Planner's Report, Jesse's report, and that's on the page two of the agenda that you received this morning.
Thanks, guys. So everything's kind of progressing. The Chancy Bike Path Extension, it looks like we're going to need to acquire some property there. We have two options. Just when the surveys came back, the, the property and the ownership of it, it's, dates pretty far back, so it's a little complicated there. For the Baileys, the Domeville FEMA-approved use of York Township's FEMA-bated properties for the Domeville Trailhead. The Bike Way Committee has had some new etiquette signs made. Those will be installed soon. We finished the Whispering Pine subdivision, phase two was, it's all finalized and approved. We started meeting with teams for Athens County together just to walk them through our new website. We met with the team of Albany, and so they, they're able to use that toolkit and a little more comfortable with that, the new community guide website there. The only other thing is that, that, so EDA issued the CARES Act in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And what it did is it's broadened maybe, perhaps, some of the, what's fundable through EDA. So, and they got about two, oh gosh, what was it? They got $2 billion versus 200 million, something along those lines. So right now, what we're looking at is maybe is the, a group of folks pursuing a project kind of centered around the Baileys project. I mean, that's not how we'll spin it for EDA, but the Village of Chancy, their sewer systems is only operating at about 30% because they have so much INI. So there is chance there to do some significant sewer improvement throughout the village, which is a really expensive project, and it would also increase capacity. So there's, and then, you know, we're trying to figure out what kind of infrastructure pieces would be useful as we're, as we try to pursue an EDA grant. You know, we have to think about their outcomes, as in jobs retained and jobs created. So kind of putting our thinking caps on for that to see if we can get something together. So if anyone's interested in that, feel free to reach out to myself or or others that are already involved. Part of that EDA funding also has some planning or planning exercise, planning activities are one of the eligible projects. As a separate aside, we're looking at creating something like that Balancing Nature and Commerce workshop, a lot of folks on the commission had committed to attending, but we just quite, didn't quite get it all together last February, having one of those locally for maybe a larger kind of multi-county region, maybe the same region that Rural Action is, uses for their, their power application. If somebody, anyone's interested in that, we'll definitely clue people in as we work through those details to put that proposal together with the conservation funds. Unless anyone has any questions, that's, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Jesse. All right, next item on our agenda are the membership reports. To make this easy, I will just go, I'll start calling people out in order as they are on my screen. So we will go with the county commissioners. Chris Schmeele, you're to my top left, and Lenny's right below me there. So Chris and Lenny, do you have anything to share?
Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the census really quick. Mayor Patterson mentioned this call we were on yesterday, and as soon as I'm done with this call, I'm going to reach back out to OU because to me, what I heard this guy say is that if we could get data from Ohio University on students that live off-campus, they are open to taking that data just like they do on-campus students. That would be huge, in my opinion, instead of us trying to track down these people that have left town and moved and stuff. So I'm pretty excited about that. That could be a game changer. Throughout the whole county, we had a complete committee meeting yesterday. It seems like Nelsonville's starting to lag behind a tad. And then the eastern part of the county, but also the update and leave portion of the census has started, and those are people that get PO boxes. So places like Chancy and some of the other villages, this may help their numbers come up. Also wanted to talk about this idea that I presented yesterday at the Economic Development Council about, it's, I'm calling it remote in Athens. And the concept here is, could we use attracting remote workers to Athens as a way to diversify our economy? There are programs around the country that are doing this. The state of Vermont will give you $10,000 if you can work remotely and you'll move to Vermont. So if, if anyone's interested in this topic, we have an ad hoc committee that's getting started, and it's going to be housed over at the Economic Development Council. So if you're interested, let me know. Also, the EMS station has, is being built now out on Kenny, Kenny Drive. The footers are poured, the, the concrete is getting more concrete, stem walls and stuff. So just wanted to give you guys an update. I think it sounds like that project will be done by the fall sometime, so excited about that. And that's all I got.
Just one thing from the revenue perspective, the preliminary estimates came in for a May sales tax, and it was down 13% from last year. There's still some adjustments that have to be made, and the auto sales tax has to get added in, but that's an indicator of what the retail sales were like in May, which is a little more than what we were anticipating from our budget commission's perspective, a little less from my perspective. I thought it was going to be a little higher. So it's kind of mixed news, not happy news. It's going to cost us another $100,000 in revenue this year. So now we're up to looking at missing our revenue mark by about a half million dollars. So that's a pretty significant number, but it's our hope that that's the end, that, you know, sales tax will start to flatten out compared to last year and come back a little bit here as things open up a little more and things get to be a little more regular, at least for the next few months. We'll see how it goes. So if that happens, we don't anticipate any major changes in our budget, but if that doesn't happen, there's going to have to be some major changes in the second half of the year. So. So, uh, we're still in a wait and see mode as far as that goes, but, uh, things aren't, um, great, but they aren't as bad as they could be.
Thank you, Lenny. Thank you, Chris. Okay, continuing through my screen, uh, next member, Arian, do you have anything you'd like to share this morning?
Uh, nothing really. Uh, we're still operating at the county board. Um, uh, we still are functioning and providing services, but many of our buildings, uh, are unstaffed. I'm, I'm in my office right now, but we, uh, for the most part are working remotely. Uh, we have a soft reopening or partial reopening scheduled for, uh, July 6th, but that might change. It'll all depend on what the, uh, uh, case numbers are looking like at that time. Um, and the 22nd of this month, we'll be deciding whether or not that will be our reopen, uh, reopening date or whether we'll push it back. And I just saw Jack Pepper just joined if you wanted to bump over to him. Uh, but that's, that's really all I have.
Thank you, Arian. Jack, are you on the line? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I got distracted and forgot, but I'm here now.
No, no apology needed. Uh, Jack, we're just doing the roundtable discussions. Um, however, we did have, um, uh, coronavirus on the agenda earlier. And so we, we said if, uh, you did, uh, if, if you did make the call that we would jump back to you. Do you have a, uh, I know you're just joining us, but do you have any updates you'd like to share, any information?
Um, sure. Um, yeah, we, we, we still are, are really pretty happy with, um, you know, how we've managed coronavirus here in, in Athens County. Um, I know we had a little bump yesterday. We went from 18 to 22. But, um, you know, we've been pretty fortunate in that everything that we've, we've seen so far has generally been isolated to family units. So, you know, better than half of our cases came from one family unit. And then we had, you know, the cases yesterday basically came from one family unit. So, so that's actually really, that's really promising, promising. And we, we continue to be really proud of that. Um, we are definitely transitioning, um, at least some of our staff back to more of, of routine services. So, so our front door is open again. Um, so you can walk in and get services right now. Our EH staff is back out in the community doing a lot of inspections and, and, uh, you know, follow-up work from, for the Corona explosion. But my life continues to sort of be occupied by COVID-19, uh, response-related, um, issues. So certainly not, not gone. Um, you know, we've been looking at a ton of plans, uh, you know, for people wanting to get open or do different events. It's been a little frustrating for us as the, the guidance coming from the state seems to change on a, on an eight to 12-hour, um, interval. So, so we're just doing the best we can to, uh, use some common sense. Um, you know, if people, uh, sort of refuse to follow, uh, the state recommendations, we, we work with them as best we can to try to make sure that, uh, the event that they're, that they're hosting or putting on is going to be a safe one. But it, it, it's, it's been very challenging trying to, to balance the state recommendations and, um, you know, what people are trying to do here on, on the, uh, on the front lines. Yesterday was a big day. Lots of reopenings yesterday, movie theaters, um, indoor trampoline parks, water parks. Uh, there was a whole, there was about 15 items, 15, uh, different, mostly entertainment-related items that, that opened, were, were, were allowed to open yes, yesterday. Um, we got it, we got modified fair guidance on Monday. Um, so the, the fair is now more of a full fair. Um, the state's actually offering money, um, $50,000 to fair boards that put on a junior fair, $15,000 to those fairs that don't have a junior fair. So that was sort of a pretty significant change from, from, uh, you know, what the previous guidance had said. Uh, so lots of changing, um, lots of moving targets and trying to keep up is keeping us very busy.
Any questions or comments for Jack before we move on? Thank you, Jack. Uh, next person, Mayor Patterson.
Thanks, Paul. Uh, I just have a couple of items. The Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway is, um, still on track for completion in September. We, uh, also, it's still under review by Director Hedy, which I see he's on this call. Uh, but we did get, um, we had a bid opening for the Stimson Avenue project. Uh, and we had three bids that came in and one of them came in within the 10% above engineers' of cost, uh, cost estimate. And that was, that was a good thing. And the last thing again to just mention to this group, um, is that Director Hedy submitted a, uh, a grant application to have, excuse me, to have a roundabout at 56 and 682. I believe that was small cities. Um, Bob, if you want to jump in and clarify that for me, that'd be great. Well, anyway, I can get more details on that. Other than that, um, I've got a really weak signal. So if I'm jumping around, I apologize. Other than that, I don't have anything else to share. Oh, I do. One other thing, I mentioned this and Paul, you were kind of alluding to it. Uh, with the, uh, meeting that we had with the UBA Uptown Business Association, CVS will be opening in the near future, a drive-through using their drive-through window, drive-through pharmacy, a COVID-19, uh, testing capability, um, here. They've had 34 of them that are going to be opening up this Friday, I believe, across the state of Ohio. Uh, unfortunately, in that first tranche, when I looked at it two weeks ago, there was no city in Southeast Ohio that they were going to open up. I, I, uh, expressed my displeasure with that, with CVS. And so they are going to open one up in Zanesville, at the Zanesville CVS and one in Athens and one somewhere else in Southeast Ohio. And then they will open up more in Marietta, Ironton, um, Chillicothe and some other locations throughout the, uh, Southeast Ohio quadrant. But there was nobody, the, the closest to us would have been Columbus. And nobody wants to drive or needs to drive an hour and 10 minutes to go get tested for COVID-19 outside of what you can do here in the city, which I acknowledge that, um, that you, you can be tested here, uh, but this would have stood up at a, an alternative testing place. That's all I've got. You're muted, Paul.
Bob Hedy, are you, are you, or is your, uh, you, are you, can you hear us now? Okay. Uh, we'll move on. Uh, next person, Warren, do you have anything to share? Warren Jeffers.
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Yeah. Uh, Steve Pearson, Steve?
Yeah, I just have two things. Um, one is, uh, the township's been coordinating with the engineer's office related to the bridge replacement and closure of State Route 56 out by the, uh, Arian probably is really familiar with, what's going to be happening out there. Um, the bridge by UPS is going to be replaced. It's an 80-day project, starts June 15th. Um, and so the county expects quite a bit of traffic to be diverted to Radford Road. We expect as a township to have quite a bit of traffic on Lovell Road. So Jeff has, um, not to steal a whole lot of Jeff's thunder on this, but he's concerned because he has a slip that's starting, um, close to the intersection at 56 on Radford Road. Yeah, and in the trustees' case, Lovell Road has some very narrow sections, some very nasty vertical curves. And people that aren't familiar with driving that road, um, will have a hard time doing that. You can imagine a lot of people, if they're coming into town, they're just going to cut across Lovell to Lurig, up to 682 by the, uh, AEP offices. And that's kind of how they're going to get back into town, unless they're farther out, would jump on 32 and 50 and come in on the highway into town. So all that New Marshfield 56 traffic is going to be spread out all over the countryside. Um, Jeff's been very good about working with us. We're kind of coming up with a, um, a common strategy on how we might be able to deal with the extra traffic. That's the first thing. The second thing is, and this is related to the trustees working with the county health department. Appreciate all the work, um, that Patrick McGary, Environmental Division Director, has done with us. We're going to have a, I guess I'll call it to a soft opening of the Plains Community Center, the Plains, uh, Park. Um, the outdoor area, the covered porch has always been open to the public with masking and social distancing, um, required. However, what we're doing now is, um, we're working with Keith Wasserman at Good Works. Good Works usually puts on a summertime lunch meal program at the Plains Methodist Church, and the church is closed down and would not allow, um, Good Works to use their facility for that. So what is, what we have done is we've reached an agreement with Good Works. They'll practice, um, uh, it'll be a, essentially an off-site serving. They'll prepare the food at Good Works. It'll be brought to the park, distributed individually. Um, we will allow people to stay there and eat, but they'll be encouraged probably just to, to take a meal and, um, and take it home with them. It's a seven-week program, four days a week, starts, uh, June the 15th. So four days a week starting June 15th, um, seven weeks, free lunch on the plains at the community park sponsored by Good Works. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, next person, uh, Jeff Maiden, County Engineer Jeff.
Thanks, Paul. Um, I got a few things, um, caught up on what Steve said. Never really got much of an advance notice on that State Route 56 bridge closure. Talked to Alan Craig about it yesterday at District 10. ODOT's planned detour on that was to go out 682 to Route 50, Route 50 to 681 in Albany. Route 681 in Albany to 356, State Route, and then, and then State Route 56 back. That's their signed detour, which, you know, it's a 45, 50-minute drive and it's probably about a five-minute drive out Lovell Road. So I don't think many people, I talked to him yesterday, I said, you know, it's really unrealistic, uh, to plan a detour route like that. Even, I think you're even going to get some major truck traffic on Lovell Road. So we're trying to figure out exactly what to do with that. Got a lot of concerned citizens out there. Um, and, um, trying to work on some kind of solution. Thinking about, uh, traffic humps, I guess, not bumps, but traffic humps is what they call them. I know the city uses them some. I've seen them on, uh, County Road 20 extension into Athens, Columbia. I don't know what, maybe I'll give Bob Hedy a call. Now, I haven't had much experience with these traffic bumps. I've read quite a bit about them recently and they can also cause accidents if you've got speeds over 25 mile an hour. People are surprised by them. They hit them. They lose control of their vehicle. They go left to center. That's an especially narrow road, so I got concerns about that too. Issued my annual report, um, put it on the website first of June. And it's, um, I guess just the highlights are that we really had our biggest year in history. We, we fixed 23 landslides last year, all mostly drilled shaft walls. Uh, did 12 bridge projects all in-house with our people and, um, paved, uh, essentially improved 36 miles of road. Paving and chipping seal totaled about 28 miles or something like that. The rest of it was all asphalt leveling. So it's going to be hard to duplicate that in the future. We, we had some grants, the, one grant that was held over from the previous year that, that, we basically did 13 millions, 13 million dollars worth of business with about a four and a half million dollar budget last year. So that's going to be tough to do again. I've got the gas tax, motor vehicle license plate tax in May. We had a 63% reduction in the motor vehicle license plate tax. Only a 13% reduction in gas tax, but, but that's because the gas tax lags three months. We won't really start seeing the real impact of the gas tax until this month, June or probably most likely July, because 90 days from, from early March is, is July. So, um, most county engineers, county association are projecting a 35% drop in gas tax revenues. So I've cut $1.4 million out of my budget, which is really, um, a, a large paving program. And, um, um, I had 10 bridges planned to replace. Right now we're down to four, possibly five, depending upon. We're kind of monitoring on a month-to-month basis to see, we'll get a much better understanding when the, um, at the end of this month, I guess, first of July. But, um, that's a huge blow to us. If we hadn't had the gas tax increase last year, we would be definitely be laying people off. I mean, there's no way, um, that would consume roughly my payroll. Last year, our payroll and benefits were about 2.2 million dollars. So we'd probably talk without that gas tax increase, probably 50% reduction in, in employees. So we're lucky. We're really lucky. Um, and we're hoping that's conservative because the motor vehicle license plate tax, because everybody was closed, all the, all the stores were closed, I guess. Um, the only renewals were by mail and, uh, and that's starting to open up. And, but there's actually been a, um, moratorium. You don't have to renew your place until December 1st. So I don't know if everybody knows that, but, um, you're not going to get picked up if you got out-of-date license plates until the first of December, unless the, the COVID-19 emergency is, uh, lifted before then. So, uh, but I saw a long line. I think that's gonna, those funds will, will, uh, probably receive later in the year. So that's a big hit. Uh, we finished our first bridge project today. We're going to pave it and open it tomorrow on Mill Creek Road. That's, uh, again, designed and built in-house. I put my report this year, we saved at least $1 million this year by designing and building our own bridge program, our own bridges. That's both bridge repair, structural bridge repair as well as, uh, new bridges. So we're, we're trying to, we, I got about 50 bridges to replace in the next five years. I'm not sure where that money's going to come from. We're getting ready to pave County Road 10, County Road 17. We're receiving bids in about a week. That's a phase two completion of those two roads. We've been burmin' and ditching those roads and replacing culverts on those roads. Um, we're starting that next week on County Road 17, or County Road 10. County Road 17's done. Um, and I guess the last thing is, uh, well, two other things, the storm damage we've had recently, major flooding. And I've been out looking at sites. I've looked at at least a dozen sites where we've had, uh, really a lot of damage, mostly down south of Radford Road toward Albany in that area. Um, a lot of culvert washouts, bridge, bridge damage, number of different things down there. And landslides, I've got probably six to eight new landslides, uh, seeking funding for. One of them is we, we've started to see the cracking or the, what's called the escarpment, the road surface on Radford Road. Uh, we've been watching that. I first photographed that, I think, April 27th. And so I went ahead and programmed it or tried to program it because I anticipate it's going to get worse. But, um, right now it hasn't, but I got a real problem if, uh, we divert all this traffic on Radford Road and then it drops a couple of feet, I'm going to have to close the road. We're really going to have a choice. So that's really going to, uh, create a problem on Lovell Road. And the last thing is Johnson Road, County Road 7 closure. ODOT's planning on, uh, building a cul-de-sac at the end of Johnson Road and completely, uh, closing Johnson Road there. So we know access into the Messenger Eclipse or, or any traffic into the plains. I've really looked at that. You know, it makes sense to close the center left-hand turn lane. There's been a lot of, uh, a lot of accidents there. And the, we went four and a half years without a single accident after we made those countermeasures in, uh, 2013. Countermeasures I recommend ODOT District 10, but changed last year. I think the traffics, there's more traffic that's moving faster. ODOT wants to establish a 60 mile an hour speed limit out there. They've needed to do that for about 18 months. So the decision to close the center left-hand lane, left turn on the Johnson Road or left turn coming south on the River Road is really a no-brainer, I think. But, uh, a big question mark on closing Johnson Road. We've got about 2,000 cars a day. In the last four years, over a million cars have passed through there without a single accident. So, uh, it's not really based, I hired a, um, an engineer out of Western Ohio to take a look at it. He's, uh, uh, he has a PTO. uh, he has a P T O E after his credentials, after P E, which is professional traffic operations engineer. And um, and he said, based on the accident data, there's really no reason to close Johnson Road completely. So there must be other motivations to do that. And that could be the fact that there, there's a lot of school traffic there. A lot of young drivers without experience. Um, and it's, it's an overall strategy, ODOT said in a, a call that we had. Uh, Lanny sat in on that call. Um, it's an overall strategy really to, to really close, close almost all at-grade crossings like they've done, or they've built interchanges from uh, from Logan to Lancaster or thereabouts. I guess from Nelsonville to Rockbridge, I guess, is what that, that section of road is. So um, anyways, that's, that's a lot, but um, uh, the side, there's not going to be a public meeting on Johnson Road. Commissioners requested it. And I got a letter yesterday on that, that they're not going to have a public meeting on that. So looks like that's going to go forward.
But you can go to their website and leave comments if it's important to you.
Right, right. Yeah.
I don't know if the trustees in uh, Athens Township have any viewpoints on that or?
Um, we're putting together a comment right now. Um, essentially it's the same as Jeff's where uh, we're not opposed to the closing of the median. Um, however, we think that Johnson Road should remain open to a right or a westerly turn to go back into Athens. Um, so we're, we're not for the, the closure um, there at all. Um, that will take all the traffic to the six eighty-two interchange um, for entry, but it will allow another way out of town if you're coming back into Athens. One thing I might add too, if you go to the township's website, athenstpp.com, um, I have a story there about the closure, request for comments. And there's a real quick link there where I've got it directly linked to the ODOT site. So you wouldn't have to, you know, run the maze over it at the ODOT website. Just go to the eight athenstpp.com and anybody can click on it and make a comment. Right now there's around thirty comments, upper twenties, about thirty. It's running fifty-fifty. Half the people think it's a good idea. Half are opposed. Most of the arguments though, uh, for not closing it are based on convenience and not safety. So there's a lot of people commenting, it'll be inconvenient for me. Um, that's, you know, my opinion is that's not going to hold much water when it comes to, you know, those people that are looking at it from the safety, the safety angle. So that's it.
Hey Jeff, whatever happened to your proposal of doing the service roads under thirty-three? Is that dead? Have you tried to give that to the state to look at?
Because yeah, they're really trying to eliminate. They don't want that traffic really now. They, that, that would, we could build that road at, at a pretty expensive price tag. And um, and all that's going to do is bring traffic over to, uh, they, they really want to close Johnson Road. And, and, and I think the thinking is even though the accident data doesn't support it now, um, the statement was made in a conference call we had in March, March twenty-fourth was um, well, but we'll, we'll be closing it in five or six years if we don't do it now. Uh, that was one statement made. But um, there's really, I've looked at the accidents going back to two thousand and thirteen. There's only um, in fifteen and sixteen, there were two angle accidents with no injury uh, where people turn right, get hit. So going all the way back to thirteen and seven, almost eight years, there's only been two accidents related to people turning out. But then in the last four years, there's really been none. And there were like three little uh, fender benders where people were sitting at the, at the stop sign and they were hit from behind as they were sitting there. So, and those might go back to two thousand and ten, but basically um, but again, it's uh, another argument that was made is if you build a merge lane uh, or acceleration lane uh, to turn right and go into Athens that um, um, I think it was John Cunnor, one of the engineers in that, in that conference call. So yeah, but you could, you could potentially merge issues with uh, traffic merging into faster-moving traffic. Um, but I've looked at a lot of deceleration lanes and acceleration lanes from here to Columbus. And um, and, and you know, six hundred foot, it might be a longer deceleration lane. And I had a conversation with Alan Craig yesterday about um, the actual engineering design of those lanes. And he told me that basically there's not a lot of information on, or safety information related to those lanes, to acceleration, deceleration. As if you look at your Alandema manuals, and I haven't really uh, researched that at this point, but I will. Uh, but I, you know, we've only got a couple of weeks and then I think it's uh, they're going to make that decision. I don't know if, and I, I, I don't really know at this point if um, any comments are going to change the decisions that are made. I don't know, but, but uh, and, and it's a difficult thing because you've always had that issue. We went four and a half years without any accidents on the left-hand turn lane. After we put signage up and we put the quick curbs up to turn right, I suggested all that before. Because basically before two thousand and thirteen, you could pull up the intersection and not really know you're not supposed to go across there and go left. I think there was one small sign that said, you know, right turn only or something, but wasn't visibly obvious when you pulled up to that. And I really struggled with that my second year as county engineer and my second or third month of two thousand and thirteen. I mean, how do you deal with this situation? So I'm kind of relying on, on experts in the traffic field. And that's why I hired a gentleman out of the Cincinnati area to take a look at it. He gave me his initial take on it. Um, but I guess there's a lot of considerations that go into that. I, I know that ODOT has a right to do that if they, they want to do that. So it's a tough, you know, it's a tough issue. I've driven that intersection every, every day for sixteen years. So I try not to be biased. Um, but I drive it every morning, every night going home. And I've never had anything close to an accident there, but I've been driving for forty-six years. So I think a lot of it has to do with skill level and how alert you are and what you know and and uh, but it's never, I mean, but I've seen, you know, I, I, I look at the videos of the accidents that occur on the left-hand turn and I, I show you, I've got those videos. ODOT has shared them with me and it's absolutely unbelievable. People that are turning, in, in one particular accident um, last year, in March last year, a lady T-boned a car coming south. And the car coming south saw her and tried to move into the right lane. They were in the passing lane. And a woman drove into the side of a vehicle coming south. And it wasn't just one vehicle by itself. There were three or four, five together. So how you do that, I don't know without uh, being completely looking at your phone or, or I, I, I don't know. It, it's absolutely amazing, you know, some of these accidents. So I believe those accidents are going to occur at the interchange as you get off six eighty-two. Those accidents will occur down at the traffic light, I think. It's just a matter you're going to be moving a lot slower and and you're not going to, you know, encountering sixty, traffic moving sixty-five miles an hour. And so
Well, I know when I, I stop and think about how much uh, traffic load is going to change and put on six eighty-two.
Yeah.
Where my subdivision comes out, it's right against Route thirty-three and the exit ramp coming south. The cars don't stop there. They do a rolling stop. And yesterday, as I sat for five minutes, or day before yesterday, trying to get out and go across six eighty-two, go down the ramp to get on thirty-three, a car came up the southbound ramp, didn't stop, shot right directly across to go into the down ramp back onto thirty-three and missed by three foot, getting T-boned by a, a van. And you know, I, I sit there and watch things like this almost weekly. And when they throw that much more traffic into that intersection, let alone when school starts back up, it's, there's going to, it's, all it's going to do, it's going to cause more accidents, but it's going to be in a different location.
We've got two thousand, we, we've checked the traffic counts out there. I counted them about six months ago over about a week period. And we steadily have two thousand cars a day turning right on, on uh, Route thirty-three there. So all two thousand of those cars are going to go back on six eighty-two because you can't get into Athens across the Hocking River, across the floodplain there. So they all have to go back. They either going to turn right on the six eighty-two or they're going to turn left on six eighty-two, go to Athens. So you're going to put probably a thousand cars in each direction. Um, so it's, it's uh, I, I will probably go south on six eighty-two into Athens and have my traffic at the, at the state Route fifty-six intersection and, and across the, the uh, uh, around about on Richland Avenue and into thirty-three that way is how I'll go to work. I won't go all the way up. I won't backtrack to six eighty-two and go south. So yeah, I don't want everybody, I'm, I'm on the other end of the plains. So that's how, that's yeah, I think the impact's going to be uh, tremendous for sure. That's all I got. Thank you.
Hey Paul, can I, I want to add something real quickly too. I noticed in the comments at ODOT that people were concerned, just like Warren, that there'll be additional traffic coming to the school in particular and going into the school on Elm Street, which has no curb and gutter, open ditches, no street um, lighting, anything like that. But none of ODOT's comments or responses back indicated that the township has a three-quarter million dollar street rebuild project. TAP grant approved that'll occur in two thousand and twenty-two that will completely rebuild Elm Street into the high school, curb and gutter, storm drain, street lights, new pavement, sidewalk, bicycle lane, the whole complete streets concept. So I know a lot of people expressed a concern there'll be additional traffic on Elm Street where we didn't even anticipate it. The grant that we obtained was way prior to any discussion about closing off the median. So we've kind of had the reverse perfect storm, if you will, for rebuilding Elm Street. And that'll start in the two thousand and twenty-two um, construction season.
Another thing that's going to change the amount of people coming to the plains is when they, they move the uh, the upper level uh, grade schools all to a central location. It's what now that is the current uh, Plains Elementary School. All those parents from Athens are going to come out and drop their kids off and pick them up. You know, twice a day. And adding say another four hundred cars coming out at certain times. I don't think they're considering that either.
Right. I think what will happen there at the elementary school, people will go to the first traffic light at Poston Road, turn right, head towards the Tyson Industrial Park. When they get down to um, Lee Master Road, they'll hang a left and kind of come in the back door to the elementary school. That's how I go home at night. I never drive planes. I drive up the six eighty-two interchange, take post into Lee Master and head kind of the north side of the plains or actually the west side.
Yeah, but I'm just saying it's going to increase the, the load of traffic at the six eighty-two, thirty-three interchange there.
Right. One of the discussions, yeah, I think you might have been there, Warren. Jeff was there too. When we talked to um, Superintendent Gibbs, my concern was there was going to be additional bus traffic because you know, everybody's going to have to be bussed in, or the majority of the students bussed in. Um, Mr. Gibbs' concern was he said more parents take their children to school than would ride on the bus, which you're going to see is vehicle traffic, not more bus traffic.
Exactly.
So that's, that'll be, you know, something where Dover Township, part of that, part of Lee Master that comes into the back way there at the elementary school is in Dover Township, some is in Athens. So I can see the possibilities. We might need to rework that section of road from Connet back to Poston.
Always stuff to plan, right?
Exactly.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else on that, or Jeff, do you have anything else?
No, that's all. I, I know I talked, I apologize for talking so long.
Quite, quite all right. No problem. No need to apologize, Jeff. Um, we will move on. Miranda, Miranda Kreidler, if you're still on the line, do you have anything from Ohio University Planning?
Hi Paul, thanks. Um, just a couple of notes to add from the planning side. You know, we have construction projects in progress and still completing um, the renovation of ridges, buildings thirteen, fourteen and eighteen is complete occupancy. And the OU PD Police Department um, has or will be soon moving their operations to their new uh, location up there. Though they've continued um, operating from campus. So they'll um, be probably our first occupants. Most of the rest of us who were planned to move up there are not moving yet, um, because we're just holding out from our work from home. Um, but eventually, you know, the plan is for finance um, and others from the West Union Street Office Center to transition up there. Um, we're continuing work, um, you know, with the goal of bringing students back to campus. So we have and I'm sure you've seen the news, there's a number of work groups at the university working on facets of fall planning. Um, our recommendations will be due tomorrow um, to the coordinating council, um, and from there to the president. So we should see more in terms of um, rollout of plans for um, returning safely uh, in the coming weeks. So if there's no questions, I don't think I have anything else to share.
I'm on mute. Sorry about that. Uh, Bob Hedy, uh, Athens City Engineer, did you have anything to share, Bob? You're on mute.
Okay, Paul, can you hear?
Yes, I can. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, sorry about that. I had some technical difficulties earlier. Didn't get the participant number incorrect and it wouldn't let me unmute. So um, yeah, just to follow up on what Mayor Patterson had mentioned, uh, Stimson Avenue, we did get a successful bid. Truco Construction out of Delaware, Ohio. Um, and we're going to move forward with awarding that. Uh, we'll start doing some underground or moving utilities underground this summer, a little bit of water and sewer work. And then February should be the big kickoff for, for street construction. And Stimson Avenue will be one-way westbound then for the duration of the construction. Uh, fifty-six, six eighty-two, we are applying for a small cities grant uh, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four uh, to put uh, roundabout there at that intersection. And it appears a single lane roundabout will, will carry the capacity there. It sounds like some of the things ODOT may be doing at Johnson Road may impact that. Um, there should be enough capacity. We're seeing about, we see about ten thousand cars a day coming on West Union currently. Um, and then this summer, just, just for awareness and may, maybe for OU, we're looking to repave the Richmond Avenue Roundabout and re-stripe it. And that should happen before the middle of August. That's all I had, Paul.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, next person, Ben Abphil. Athens County Auditor's Office. Ben, are you there?
Morning, everyone. Um, Lanny kind of stole my thunder on the uh, sales ratio or sales, sales tax numbers. Um, he is right, it's thirteen percent below what last uh, last year was, which um, like he said, is kind of in between what he, he was speculating and, and what Jill and the Budget Commission were, were talking about or thinking. Um, other than that, we're just kind of, you know, trying to keep an eye on things. Um, hopefully the numbers don't fall too bad and rebound quickly with, with everything opening back up. Um, and then as far as uh, you know, on real estate, we've been uh, kind of business as normal. Um, actually our conveyance has been up through this whole ordeal, um, which is surprising. Um, but you know, I know rates were low and people were trying to get or take advantage of all that stuff. So I think that um, that helped at least uh, drive some of those numbers. Um, some of those numbers up, which is, is, is good. Um, that's really kind of about it. We're um, you know, we're back full staff, working normal, plugging away.
Thanks, Ben. Uh, next person, uh, Luke Soffridge, Soapack. Luke, do you have anything additional to add?
I don't, other than it's not been highlighted yet and I don't want to steal Mayor Guzman's thunder, but we're working closely with a lot of other groups in the census.
Thank you, Luke. Um, Sarah, Sarah Morris-Maxfield?
Morning, everybody. Um, I'm just going to give a couple of updates from the planning perspective. We um, we are at five years now for our first ever Athens County Economic Development Strategic Plan. Um, we have pretty much executed all of the um, tactics and goals that we had set out to execute. So um, I have to say, I'm, I'm, you know, really proud of, of that and my staff and, and everyone who has supported us in all of the projects that we outlined and things we um, really wanted to see happen for the county. So we are um, we are starting to look at uh, um, an update to that plan, working with the consultants that we had previously um, to set some new goals. And I have to say, I think the timing couldn't be better because obviously there's been a lot of changes in the last, not just few years, but especially the last six, six months on the way that um, I think, understanding a little bit better the, the intense need to diversify our economy. And so um, with that in mind, we've asked the consultants to think about some um, newer strategies, some out-of-the-box strategies, really taking into account, um, you know, the environment. you know, the environment that, that we're living in today. And so I'm excited about that. One of the things that, you know, I anticipate being included is, is obviously the, the impact that work from home has on companies, workers and our existing commercial property stock. And, you know, how much space is being used for, for that purpose. So we'll be looking closely at that. And to piggyback on what Chris was saying, his, his idea came up kind of at the same time that we were already working with a company that reached out to us with this idea of using Athens County as a, as a talent pool target for work from home opportunities. So this particular company is supporting multiple states unemployment customer service halls. As you probably know, states often outsource that kind of work. And they were looking for 500 different employees. And although I don't know that we'll be able to fill all of those positions, we're working with Job and Family Services and Lori at the WIOA Board to try to help assist that. So that, that's got, got us really thinking about this remote work strategy for, for workers here in our county. So that's, that's going to be, I think, a piece that we focus on as we move forward. On another note, one of this, you know, goals that we have in that plan that we are currently executing out at the industrial park, we, the Port Authority will be making their final choice for the engineering slash architectural firm at the next Port Authority meeting on Wednesday. We went through an exhaustive RFP process and lots of levels of, of scrutiny on all of these different firms. And we're ready to choose, choose a firm. And so we'll, we'll be doing that hopefully on Wednesday. The, the board will vote on the committee's recommendation and we'll start moving into contract negotiations with that. So I'm hoping that we'll really see some, some dirt moving out there by the end of the summer. I'm really excited about that and, and seeing that happen. So those are kind of two of the major things that we have going on in our office.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, if there's nothing else from Sarah, Mayor Guzman, Gary Guzman, Amesville, are you present, Gary?
Yeah, I'm here. Good morning. Council, Village Council messed last night and we had a few issues. We passed a resolution which would allow us to access Senate Bill 310 funds that are part of the CARES package. So we'll be moving forward to access that share of funds for the village. Council's also working on a mission and value statement, started that work last night with some brainstorming, moving ahead. Yesterday, we opened the playgrounds in the village with signage and hand sanitizer and guidelines set out for safe use of the playground, which had been closed for three months. So looking to see how that rollout goes, people showing up and using the playground in town. We were also certified last week as a B-City USA program. So we'll be putting signage up in the village and doing literature and workshops on pollinator-friendly gardening and various other things that are part of being part of the B-City USA initiative. Later on today, we'll be the Mayor's Partnership for Progress meeting. We'll be going over numerous issues. One of the things we've dealt with recently is submit to the state administration and legislature action plan for recovery for Southeast Ohio. That's been signed off on various mayors throughout the region, Southeast Ohio, on our particular challenges with COVID-19, that we always have challenges even without COVID-19, but some of the additional challenges that we're facing and our recommendations for helping out the region. So that's it from me.
Hey Paul?
Yes, Steve?
I got a little something to piggyback on what Mayor Guzman said.
Okay.
On Senate Bill 310, my understanding is that a political subdivision that wants to get into that program has to pass a resolution to do that. And for, I know there's, I think Greg Andrews is still on, Tim Warren left, but for any township, if you go to the Ohio Township Association website, they have a, a model ordinance or a, excuse me, a model resolution for townships to adopt. And so it's, it's very simple, you know, to do that. It's not, you know, not a big problem. So it's just knowing where to go and, and you know, and how to, how to find it. But I think what it is, you do, as the mayor said, you have to pass a resolution or you know, to be able to tap into those funds because there's some pretty strict guidelines on what's recoverable and what isn't.
Steve. Thanks, Steve. Uh, let's see, Don, Don Gosell, Donald, Don, are you still there?
Hi, it's actually Kayla. I'm sitting in for Don, he's out this week, but we don't have anything really. Just been working, waiting to hear back from the state EMA, from our recovery branch on funding for the road slips that we've submitted, that we've, you know, been in discussion with Jeff with. And then other than that, still doing, uh, trying to put together all the COVID reimbursement stuff.
Okay, thank you, Kayla. Uh, Jason Morosco, are you still there, Jason?
Or, can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Okay, yeah, nope, I don't have much, I'm excited for the EMT, the newest efficient building that we are hopefully going to get. Chris, are, is it still going to have solar panel or, or have been approved to get solar panels? What's the budget? Is that going to happen?
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding that we're going to follow through and get the, the solar panels and it will be, you know, the net zero energy building. You know, feel free to stop by and, and see the progress, everybody. So yeah, they, you'll see all the insulation going in around the flutters and underneath the slab here soon. So, yep, on target.
Okay, great. And I've, I've been chatting back and forth with Don Dispenza as it's been getting moving. So nope, that's awesome, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Looks, looks to me like everybody on the line has had an opportunity to speak. Did I, did I forget somebody? If so, please speak up now. Okay. And I don't believe we have any members of the public here for any public comment. And with that being said, our next meeting is scheduled for July 9th, 2020. Same bat time. And I can, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Noted, okay. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.